It is six o'clock, Tuesday, December the 13th, 2022. Call this meeting of the Montgomery City Council to order at this time. We do have a quorum present. Four members are here. TJ Wickerston is not. We ask that everyone silence their cell phones to avoid any interruptions to our meeting. And we're glad that you're tuning in from the outside and those that have been here, thank you for your attendance. At this time, join me in the invocation, followed by the pledge to the flags. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the blessings. Help us to remember during this season the birth of our Savior and Lord Jesus Christ and help us to always remember how much you love us in that. We praise you for what you've done to bless our cities, our state, and our nation. Lord, we ask for your hand to favor upon both TJ and other staff that are sick, that you would make them well as soon as possible, and your blessings on our families, our businesses, our parks, our recreation places, our schools. Let your hand to favor be upon us and guide us in wisdom in all things. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, and with this soul, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
On the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one nation.
In the citizens' forum, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
I have not received anything, Mary.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have two items. Item number one, approval of the following minutes. Special called City Council Meeting 11:1422. Special called City Council Meeting 11:1522. Item two, consideration and possible action on an escrow agreement by and between the city Montgomery and RDM Incorporated, Lupi Holdings LP, Lupi Tortilla Development Number 2216. What is the council's pleasure, when they take these separate or all together?
Separate, please.
Okay. Item one, approval of the following minutes. Special called Meeting 11:14, 11:15. All in favor? Are there any questions? All in favor of approving the minutes for both of those meetings on 11:14, 11:15? Say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed, say no, and we will approve the consent agenda, item one.
Mayor, I apologize, can I make the motion in second?
Nobody, but I'll make the motion to accept the minutes of the special called meetings.
I second it.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. A little fast there. All right. So item two must be the one you have.
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to know exactly where this is located.
Sure. This is at the southeast corner of 105 and Buffalo Springs Drive, so where the Auto Zone is.
Yes.
This is just across the small side street, which is Buffalo Springs Drive.
That way.
Right, so it's the far northwest pad side of the shop, so that's still within the shops of Montgomery Development.
All right. And is it actually a restaurant?
It is. I think the proposed site plan that we've seen, the conceptual site plan, you know, was a standard long service restaurant.
That's my question.
Is that it? All right. Any other comments? All right. Need a motion to pass consent agenda, item number two.
So this should be the motion to approve the escrow agreement? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the escrow agreement as presented?
Have a motion, have a second. Second is by Carol. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving the escrow agreement, item number two on the consent agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve the escrow agreement, item two consent agenda. Item number three, consideration and possible action on renewal of the annual permit for Cedar Crest Mobile Home Park.
Mayor and council, as you know, Cedar Crest Mobile Home Park is located on Old Flandersville Road, just down the street from us. It's been there for a number of years. Recently, it transferred ownership. And so as we've been going through this process, what the city's done in past years was we coupled an annual inspection to that, you know, to that renewal of the permit. A straight reading of the ordinance does not allow for us to do an inspection as part of or as a condition of the renewal of the permit. We certainly still have the ability to enforce any other, you know, codes, whether, you know, any other type of nuisance or anything else that we might, you know, enforce anywhere else in the city. It's just we don't tie the renewal of the permit to the inspection. Again, we've done that for probably seven or eight years. The Goldens are in the audience tonight. They have, you know, they end your package, you see the letter there from the year 2000 that, you know, did clarify the status as a non-performing park. So when we look at the ordinance and the text of the ordinance, the renewal piece, they've met those requirements. I can say in general, you know, staff and those of us who live around it have noticed a significant increase in the appearance of the park and the maintenance of the park. So we do appreciate that. And if you'd like to ask the Goldens any questions, they're here for you.
Is the park full?
Make a motion to renew the annual permit for the Cedar Crest Mobile Home Park?
Second.
Have a motion in the second. The motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving the renewal of the annual permit for Cedar Crest Mobile Home, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and the motion for item number three does carry. Item four, presentation on the proposed Superior Properties at Lone Star Mixed Use Development.
Mayor and council, the information in your package gives you a brief explanation, but for those in the audience, this parcel is located on the northwest corner or at the northwest corner of 105 and, I'm sorry, not 105, 149 and Lone Star Parkway. The developer here, we've asked him, because it's kind of a unique project that the city has not seen before, we felt like it would behoove the developer to give a, just a brief overview, you know, describe the kind of product that we want to build here and then get some feedback from you guys before they really get into the engineering site drawings and things like that. The subsequent item on here is the escrow agreement. Again, if it was a hard no from you guys, there's no sense in entering into an escrow agreement. But what we wanted to do, again, was allow them, you know, five minutes or so to give an explanation of who they are, what they do, and what they intend to build in Montgomery and get some feedback.
Okay.
So with that, I'll turn it over to you guys. If you just go to the podium and state your name.
Step up to the mic.
We're going to put the presentation up here on the board for those involved. You guys have all that in your packet. It's the same presentation as in the back.
Well, thank you for your time. My name is Greg Gobson, Costanza and Associates for the Engineers for Superior Properties of Texas. Superior Properties is Anthony Persar and a couple of the partners here. They currently have a very similar, identical development of what we're looking to bring to the city in New Caney and Porter area. It's a development there that is at this point full, and we've been looking for an opportunity in this area. Anthony lives in the area and we've been looking for an opportunity up here to bring that same type of development. As he said, this track is about fifteen and a half acre track at the northwest corner of 149 and Lone Star Parkway. It sits just east of the community center at that location. So what we're looking to do is two phases. The first phase would be on approximately eight acre track, and we would put thirty-three slabs on the ground. It's a duplex, two and three bedrooms. And so we would have sixty-six units in the first phase. It would be twenty-eight foot pavement, concrete pavement, private drives, public utilities in there. We've worked with the city and the city engineers on that. And then Phase Two, we would put an additional twenty slabs on the ground for an additional forty units, and that would be connected to the existing street, to 149, where the cul-de-sac is on the end of that street. The mixed use in front, the Superior Properties would have their management company would have a unit there or a site on site there, and then we would look to how we could develop that corner, that northwest heart corner there with some commercial development if possible. So, but we, in your packet, there are a couple of the layouts, the master layout, the Phase One layout, and then there are several pictures in there of the existing units that we have on the ground in Porter. All of these units are what we, what we'd like to say is what we would live in. Grant countertops, stainless, all through the kitchen, nice living area. As I said, two and three bedrooms, the master is downstairs, and then there's a single bedroom or four, two bedrooms upstairs in the three bedroom unit. It's a product that we're very proud of, and our tenants that we have in there are thrilled to be living in a home like this that they can afford in a very secure, dense neighborhood.
Yeah, you know, the whole purpose of kind of what we created is to really kind of bring in a custom feel into a multifamily type of facility and just even from the level of finishes, as you're seeing through some of the pictures on the pages that we've brought in. But the other ideas too is we manage our own stuff, so we build and manage our own stuff, and so our hands in it from the very beginning all the way through the life of the project. And so, you know, we have the one in New Caney, which we're, which Matt, one of the partners lives where I live over here in this area, and so, you know, it's pretty exciting for me to try to do something over here. And ultimately, on the commercial side, is where our corporate home office would be and putting that on there as well to where we staff out of there and office out of Montgomery as well. Whether or not, you know, like, do you have any questions you guys may have or...
Hi, I do. Are these units, are you personally renting them out or are they for sale?
They're for lease, yes. We would rent them out.
They're only leasing?
Yes, ma'am. They're only leasing.
That's a good question. Hmm? That's a good question.
What is, in your property in New Caney, it's the exact same, you said?
As far as finish wise and just layout wise?
Yeah, square footage, design, it's the exact same?
Yes, sir.
So you say affordable, what's affordable?
So on our two bedrooms, we run right at fourteen ninety-five for a two bedroom unit, and then on our three bedrooms, we're right there in sixteen hundred to seventeen hundred price range, so.
And the other thing, you said it's gated?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We fence our complete areas. Not only that, but we also provide cameras. We put full twenty-four hour surveillance. You handle the existing property we have, that's what we have, and so they're not only fenced and gated throughout, but they're also surveilled, just for the additional safety of, you know, so it won't come up there, so.
And one more question, the lot size, it doesn't say? So what is your, what are you, what are you going to request for lot size?
It's a, it would be similar to an apartment, if I take say that word, but apartment where it's on reserve, there are no lots on it because it's a single unit, there is no intention of ever selling this as lots individual. It's a, we own the whole piece of property and we own all of the units on it.
And each one does have its own backyard and it's fenced in and gated, you know, for their own use, pets and such.
How are you defining your build lines then?
The build lines are, we're keeping separations, keeping ten foot separations between the buildings.
So you're less than five foot build line?
Yeah, there, we got five feet from fence to, five and a half feet from fence to the building. So ten and a half to eleven feet between buildings.
You indicated that it would be mixed use. What type of businesses are you, would you be considering put in there besides your office?
It would, our office would corner the facility that we would build, so we would take up a portion of that and then leave south to future businesses. Obviously, something not like kind, but, you know, to future businesses that are coming to the area or already in the area looking for it.
Dave, what's the zone and what types of businesses can go on that property?
So it's currently zone industrial, so a rezone to multifamily. Again, as they said, while the product feels very much like a single family, it would be planted like a, you know, like a multifamily, you know, project where there's no interior arms, you know, the streets are all private.
They're all private streets.
Water and sewer would still be public, people would have access to these, you know, be able to get those, they would be built like normal, but the city would not own or maintain the streets that are internal to it. So that's part of this process, part of the development process, they would then request a rezone from industrial to multifamily, you know, for the housing portion and then to rezone to commercial, you know, on a commercial reserve there at the heart corner.
And on the private roads, are you going to maintain all your typical fire marshal standards and stuff, hydrants and all that stuff?
Is Phase Two also gated?
Yes, ma'am.
So this cul-de-sac and going out Lawson Street is, it's going to come back to council again? Well, is that true or do we know?
You know, I'll ask first, sort of kind of, so, you know, when a connection is made to a public street, going to a private, I mean, is there, you know, obviously all of the, you know, the plat would have to come back, you know, if I'm, I'd have to come back and cancel, and that would be the point where, you know, identifying exactly where that date is and, you know, kind of the delineation from the public street to the private street, you know, assuming that's where their date is going to be on, you know, on their private side.
Yeah, what we would like to do, that's a dead end street right now, is, is put the cul-de-sac on the end of that street as a public driveway and as a public street so that it's no longer a dead end. And then our driveway would come off of that to stop a typical city's street, and then our gates would be up inside of that first driveway.
But your main entrance and exit is this in Phase One coming out to Lone Star Parkway?
Yes, ma'am.
Overall densities, just to talk a little bit more about, you know, densities is, you know, right now, just with the quick math on Phase One, it's like about eight and a quarter units per acre. That's about half of what we see with the multifamily that we have here in the city. We typically see, you know, six units per acre when you're dealing with multifamily, so this is a, you know, and it's obviously more dense than where a single family residential kind of development would be, but it's about half of what you would see in your more traditional apartment type complex about. Again, the intent here is really not to, not to make any kind of firm decision, but anything that you guys have that you feel like it would be beneficial to them to know sooner than later, if you have, you know, and those are often harder things to discuss, those are the things that we really want to kind of get out in front of and be able to give them an opportunity to see if it's possible to address those before taking the project on further.
Does this property go all the way to the back of the community building? Am I too far to the community building or do I have some room between there?
No, it goes all the way to the back. It's, there's the community building and then the housing behind it.
Yes.
It, our west line, it runs all the way to the northeast corner of the housing.
Can you see there on the dummy map, tell me where the, where the red out line is, which is part of the looking at, the yellow parcel is just to the left of that, at Lone Star Parkway is the grounds of the community building, and then that assisted living, you know, small apartment that they have here is just behind that, also in yellow. The other, the green parcel there to the, to the left and up of that was seven multifamily several years ago, but the project never, you know, came to fruition. It was a tax credit project that the developer ended up not getting, so there is no multifamily on that, you know, site today.
I don't have any other questions.
Any other council have anything to add? Okay, do we want to have a hand raise go of it? There's not really a motion.
If we want to move just on to the next item and then, you know, the vote on the escrow agreement would be the one that, you know, determines whether or not, you know, you guys want to, you know, allow the project, you know, to continue to develop. Again, it doesn't, you know, you're not approving anything, you're not, you know, giving your blessing to anything, you know, specifically one detail or the other. There, you know, will still be provisions of engineering review. This is just to say, you know, this is really just to get a sense of your overall feelings about this type of development, since it's not something that we see here in the city. And I've likely read articles about, you know, the market moving toward more of either a single family rental type development. I'm sure you're familiar with the one on Holden Road over there, but, you know, getting this is something new. We didn't want to make the assumption that everybody knew about it and everybody understood without seeing much thought.
Okay.
So I guess I have one more question. How locked in are you on your, on your layout?
As far as just kind of the overall design of it?
No, how close everything is together?
Yeah, there's definitely, you know, yeah, as far as flexibility, as far as moving stuff and things, it's definitely there.
You're looking for a little less density?
Mm-hmm.
All right, we can always look at densities with what we can do out there if there comes a point where the lines cross as to what's feasible.
Right. So let me just throw a scenario at you. We filled the lot, it fills up, and they, these are all single families, they're three bedrooms, two cars, two cars pull in, they got two people work there, they have a kid now that has a car. There's no place to park that third car unless they block their neighbor's driveway, because the streets are full from end to end. There's no place for any other car except for what's in the driveway. When anybody comes to visit, anything, there's nowhere for them to park.
Yeah.
It's pretty, it's pretty tight.
On the, yeah, on the, on the actual engineering design stuff, we would include additional parking spots and layouts and stuff. You can kind of see some up in the front area a little bit, just to kind of, on the front left side of the detention, kind of that north or that right corner, but parking is definitely not, something we would add. We have the same thing at our other facility as well, where we've got additional parking spaces throughout the property to make it convenient, you know, not just for the people that pull in the front, they're there, so they're not pulling in the back, but we would definitely accommodate that as well. More adj.
Sure. Yeah, just, it's pretty dense, there's not a lot of room.
We can move on to item five and settle that. Item number five, consideration and possible action regarding an escrow agreement by and between the city Montgomery, Texas and Superior Properties LLC for a fifteen point four six acre mixed use development, developed number two two one five, and authorizing the city engineer to prepare a feasibility study.
So before we put this to motion, what, what, we're not locking into this particular plan, are we?
Right. This is, this is their first pass at it, and they can change to what at least determines to, to, you know, what the council wants to see and again about, to what you're going to see with what's feasible in the market, but it sounds like they're at least, you know, willing to work with us to find a, you know, the right balance.
So that's kind of the whole point of the feasibility. You heard the concerns, and we make a motion to move forward, then you'll address those concerns, it'll come back to council, and we can move from there.
Right, you're not approving a specific plan here.
Right.
But, you know, if you, you guys were saying, yeah, we're not interested in this at all, then, you know, that, they would probably like to know that upfront too.
Yes, sir. It's really just to present the idea and kind of an overall general site use that you guys can kind of see that, and then go back and find technically things like the parking and things that you have, y'all's engineer group that y'all got in place as well, kind of set all those pieces in place to, you know, to calve out all those, you know, the density factor that you guys don't want to see and look for.
Where is the project that you have that is currently under, underarm, done with construction? You said it was where?
The one we currently are running and managing is in New Caney.
New Caney?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I get an address?
Yes, ma'am. It is two four oh nine four Sears Lane.
Okay, thank you.
And it's at Porter, Texas, seven seven three six five.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
One note that I'll make just on the mechanics of the motion in general, so again, we have the escrow agreement, this is a new development, not within an existing one, this also includes that authorization for the city engineer to do the feasibility study.
All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the escrow agreement and authorize the city engineer to prepare a feasibility study.
That's set.
If the motion is second, the motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item five, escrow agreement to be entered and feasibility study to be put in motion. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and the motion carries as stated. Item number six, consideration and possible action on appointment of four MEDC directors to serve a two-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-three, and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Mayor and council, as I explained in the packet, that the MEDC operates like the other boards and commissions in the city where it's a two-year term, four of those positions are up this year for reassignment. One of those positions is held by Ms. Langley, who serves both on council and on EDC, and the mayor serves on the other one. But the, you see the four positions that are up here, it's your pleasure whether you would like to see applications for new spaces on the MEDC or whether you would like to reappoint the folks that have served. Looking at these, I think a couple of them have served maybe one term, I think a couple have served, you know, two or three times. If you'd like to go out for applications, then, you know, we can certainly advertise for those, have them open the water bill like we do with others, we can reappoint the four who have said that they would still be willing to serve. It's, how do we put it on there? And what we do, the only thing to mind for us is if you don't want to reappoint Carol, someone else can act as.
Yes.
How many directors do we have on there?
Seven, hope.
Seven, seven.
Certainly, I would recommend all four. entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Rebecca Huzz, Carol Langley, Jeffrey Angelo, and Ryan Lundin to the MEDC Board of Directors. I second.
Now, the motion is second, the motion's debatable, amendable, requires the majority vote. All in favor of appointing the four mentioned MEDC directors to serve two-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-three, ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and that motion carries as stated. Item number seven, consideration and possible action on an ordinance of the city council of the city Montgomery, Texas amending its municipal budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, appropriating the various amounts herein, as attached in Exhibit A, containing findings of and Texas Open Meetings Act clause, and providing an immediate effective date.
Mayor and council, just as a brief, plus this is our last year's budget, so not the one we've been operating in now, this is the amendment that has tied everything to our budget. we've ever operated in. Now, this is the amendment that has tied everything together. We've got to buy all of the expenses up late for the year. This is our second amendment of that budget. And again, this will be our final one. You see kind of just a brief summary. Exhibit A is really the one to look at that shows, you know, just behind the ordinance and which is on page 55 of your packet, that's the yellow orange. And you see the funds that are being, that are, those being, I know the big one that I think was still, we were tracking down some data on was on the police wages. So Chief wants to jump in. I don't want to skip into the admin stuff. If you've got any questions, I think he's running out of packet to answer. But I'm going to turn it over to Chief on that.
Can I ask a question before you speak, Chief? Are you, are you completely ready?
Yes, I'm completely ready. Absolutely. Uh, this was a, this was a shock. I looked at this on Friday around 4:30 and I, and I opened it up and it talked ahead language in it like incorrect time sheet calculation resulting in overpayment of wages. Well, we don't calculate time sheets. We just make sure that those, the day's work matched the time that's at the end of that. Uh, calculation goes over to accounting for processing. So I went in to have a, to have a talk with Dave. Uh, Dave, these numbers are not right. Where'd you get these numbers? He says Anthony gave me these numbers. I said, well, Anthony's not at work. Uh, I came back to work on Monday morning, had a meeting with both Anthony and Dave. During the course of that meeting, I learned two things that were, that were pretty shocking. Uh, I said, we talked about this and I said, how does this go into wages? Anything that goes after 84 hours should go into overtime pay, uh, not wages. So Anthony says, well, your department's not the only one that has this issue. Uh, and Dave said, yeah, that's true. Well, why is the police department the only department that's on this sheet of paper if we're not the only one who has that issue? Uh, also I learned that they were not quite sure on the correct way to do the timing. Uh, Dave said that they actually had, uh, Nicole call their attorneys to find out how they're supposed to calculate. What brought this to my attention? Couple of months ago, Anthony walked into my office and asked me, he said, should I pay this guy this? And I said, no. I said, because he's got sick time or, or either vacation time on there. He should be paid straight time, not a time and a half. And so when I looked at all the paperwork, so at that point I asked Anthony, I said, Anthony, it doesn't look like you guys know what's going on. So can I have all the time sheets from last year? We took all the time sheets. We took part of our staff into the conference room. We split those time sheets up. You guys have those time sheets, uh, in your hand? Those are the time sheets everyone questioned. Those time sheets, we took those time sheets. It came to three, what came to 340 hours point five. And we took that number by the highest paid officer at a, at time and a half. That highest paid officer at a time and a half came to $15,380.38. And those are the, those are the ones that were in question. Those time sheets right there. Also up here, everything talks about roughly, roughly $6,400. There's not a roughly $6,400 on that code. That actual price was $52,087.296. There's no actual, there's no roughly. Everything is here is talking about roughly and it goes out. We talked about Tilly's, we talked about where Tilly's salary at for $30,000. Tilly's paid up to date. She's been paid 19 times. That's in the $40,000 range. All these numbers are, are wrong. I asked, uh, nobody could give me a straight answer. But what I do know is we do not calculate numbers. Uh, and why do we have to call the city attorney to find out how we distribute wages? It's in our, it's in our policy. It's in our policy book, how that works. For police officers, once we go, when we go to a two-week period, we go one week for 48 and the next week for 36. Once we reach that 84, anything after that 84, if there's been a vacation or a sick time in there, you get straight time. You don't get time and a half. We do not calculate time sheets. That's for accounting. And those prices were wrong. We went $22,000 over in overtime, uh, last year. If you take that $22,000 plus that $15,380.38, that's $37,380.38. Where does six, where does $106 come from? Nobody can tell.
Actually, Chief, I can tell you exactly where it comes from.
Okay.
It comes from that lineup, Chief. It comes from your wages lineup.
When you say wages lineup?
Yeah, it comes from the actual number that Anthony uses. It's right out of the budget, right?
Okay, but, but when you're doing, when you're doing anything after, we talked about time sheets. When you're doing anything after time sheets, that comes into overtime. That doesn't come into your wages. It comes into overtime.
Those are two separate categories.
Right, absolutely. It comes into, it's two separate categories.
I mean, I don't know how your budget shows to you being that far over on your regular wages. I don't, you know.
You would almost have to hire somebody for that, for that, to be over the regular wages. You would have to hire another person, in this case, almost two people. And if, and if we went that far over with the wages, you know, I've got a guy that just left because he's, he's got a, he wants to look a bit more excitement, so he just left. Do you think we'd have officers leaving here if they were making almost $13,000 over what they were making? That just, that just, that just don't work. It just don't make sense. And anything, when you look at anything, anything that has come after that, that has to go into overtime wages, anything after that. There's no way you take a set wage and say, this is what you, and induce and put other things in. You just can't do it. It just doesn't work that way.
The only thing that came out of wages were, were paychecks.
Right, absolutely. Paycheck. So anything after that, after those hours that are at work should go into overtime. That $15,000 that are on those time sheets that have question on them, those should have gone into overtime. You can't put those into wages. So our numbers came up to be, our numbers came up to be the, the, the $22,000 over plus the $15,000, which was the $37,380.38.
I don't think those are any bad.
So I'm going to ask a question quick. Dave, what is our timeline to approve this? Is there a time limit?
We're in a good spot now to do a budget amendment, but we're not in the element spot. This is something that we're going to get ahead of the audit work that starts after the year, but we certainly got enough time. If you guys would like to table this so that, so the chief and the police department can work with Anthony to figure out exactly where every one of the dollars that came out that's over budget now in wages went and why it's that way, we can certainly do it.
So when you say a good time, bad time, when, um, it's going to take more than a week to track this out. So, um, our next meeting is when?
The 10th of January is the next.
And the second meeting in January is what?
The second meeting of January.
24th.
I could try. I know the first week is a definite now because that's around, that's going to be when my son's born. So I'll try and make the second meeting if I can.
Well, we could push it to the first meeting in February, but I want to make sure we don't fall outside of ours.
Right. All this is, you know, the, so our worst case scenario here is our initial letter from the auditor is going to say, oh, you sure there's not a budget amendment? But we know and we're going to do one. And so we do the budget amendment and that comes out of there. So it's not a kind of a permanent mark.
So it's February 14th. That would be the second Tuesday in February. Is that ahead of the audit?
There's enough time to, you know, just go in and verify these numbers. So you guys have confidence in.
That's the thing. I'm not comfortable amending a budget until we have reconciled and we know where, where it went, right? So that's why I wanted to make sure that everybody's comfortable before we.
Absolutely. Because no one could tell me the update in this meeting with the exception, uh, it wasn't until I asked for time sheets that the scramble began. Then everybody starts to scramble around. And we took a look at those time sheets. And that's not the only thing in this thing. When you start talking about, it says police cars, council approved purchase of police cars that were not budgeted. Those police cars were budgeted at $174,024. I remember that. Absolutely. I have the, I have the pretty record. I got, I got the council motion.
Chief, as far as this, this, this amendment or whatever this on this agenda thing, um, until we know what it is, let's just, let's just table it.
Yeah, okay. And that's fine. But if, if we're going to, if we're going to table it, then we have to look at these cars as well. So that should be looked at as well because according to them, it's no, that money is no longer there.
That money was there. It was approved by council.
Yes.
But council didn't move the money. That's what this budget amendment does.
Okay. Well, that's, that's not, that's not what you guys said the other day.
So that's, that's where we need to figure out how it reconciles, what the number is, what it represents. Let's get the facts on it and then move forward. But right now, we don't know.
I can say that while I don't know about the, the payroll item, that it's very typical for, uh, any city council to approve a purchase and then say, and we'll do a budget amendment for that later.
Absolutely.
Which is what I think y'all did with police cars.
Okay.
When the police car purchase was approved by the council, but the budget, you know, that was done six months before that probably didn't have that money in it. And so it's typical at the end of the year that the city comes back and, and reconciles the budget basically with an amendment like that. So that's not really a, going to be an issue I've had all end of it.
I just want to point out one thing real quick. I do go off the Fairland Standards Act whenever I pay employees. Whatever they turn in to me is what I pay, plain and simple. If they have vacation time on there, I pay it on there. If they go over, there is certain laws that I have to follow with payroll in terms of what I pay them. And so if they go over 171 hours of that, of, um, of time within that 28-day cycle, that is overtime right there. The only, excuse me, the only overtime I pay is that holiday work. And I think there's a step program as well too. But as far as anything else is concerned, it is straight pay no matter what. And I just want to clarify that that is how I have been paying it. And that's been that way since the very beginning. That's what I'm trying to explain.
Well, you came to talk to me that day about that. And that's exactly what I just said. With the exception of, once we go to that 28 days, it says, if that person has missed a day or has had a vacation day for any reason, they only get, they only get paid straight time. That's not a hard thing to do. So when I say that, you can either pay them time and a half or you pay them straight time.
That's not what you said.
And that's not, and that's, that's not a question for us. That's a question for accounting. That's a question for HR.
That's not what you said.
So like I said, when we get more facts, we'll, we'll worry, we'll deal with the amendment. I won't, I'll make a motion to table this until the February 14th meeting.
We have a motion.
Second.
Uh, who's seconding? We have a second by Ms. Pat. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of tabling item number seven until, uh, February 14th, 2023. Say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed say no. And we will table item seven until February 14th, 2022. Okay. Due to illness of Ms. Bro, I understand item number eight regarding the waste collection rates, although we believe that they're very handy rates and very viable options going forward. She was not able to, I, what I understand it, negotiate one final time or something to that effect?
She was speaking with Randy Burden on these. Uh, before she had gone on vacation, she had worked on this item and done it. And then Randy asked if she wanted to follow up meetings, which was going to happen yesterday, but Nikki, you know, having COVID and the flu, she was out. So she asked if you guys are willing to, if we could table this item until the first meeting in January. We are currently paying the whole rates for waste management. So this is not a cost to us anymore. If we can, you know, table that with her time to get that confirmed. Couple more minutes with Randy before they feel like it's ready to come to us.
So they're not saying that they're ready to put these new rates in before we have our next meeting?
Right. I've got a phone call in with them. The letter said that it was, that they were going into effect in August or something like this. Maybe not going into effect yet. So I'm, I'm asking.
Like August of '23?
Yeah, August 23 coming up.
August 23?
No, it says August 1st of 2022.
Oh, yeah.
Right. This, this passed August. They sent us this letter. We got this letter over the summer. They, so they are still not sure against those new rates. And I'm asking them for just a few more weeks' grace to, to let us sign it out. Just to get more details. We take care of this first meeting in January.
Okay. So we need a motion to table until January 10th.
Make the motion that we table, uh, option, uh, item eight until, when did you say?
January 10th.
January the 10th, next meeting. I second.
We have a motion in second to table item number eight until January 10th, 2022. The motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of tabling item number eight until January 10th, 2023. Say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? No. The motion to table until January 10th, item number eight does get approved. Item number nine, consideration and possible action on sponsorship letter for proposed Silver Spur Lane connection to FM 1097 to serve the proposed Montgomery Bend Development, developed number 2203.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a letter that is, that was requested by the developer of the Mayberry property, the Full T Homes. Uh, this is a letter that they are needing to be sent to TexStot so that they can begin their permitting process for their driveway along TexStot Highway. We've done these letters before for Terra Vista, for Gardner Drive, um, for Houston Street. Uh, they just need a sponsor so that they can start their permitting process. And the city has sponsored these driveways in the past. This letter is not necessarily approving anything in their subdivision. It's truly so that they can get that process started.
Okay.
One very good question that Ms. Pat asked me earlier, that, that there's, uh, just mentioning is that sponsorship of it does not obligate us in any way to any financial obligations to it. We are just the, kind of the governmental entity that is, you know, requesting it to TexStot since it's in our city limits.
Okay. Any further discussion? Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve the letter as presented.
Second.
Second by, was that Pat? We have a, uh, motion and a second to approve item nine as stated. The motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving number nine as, item nine as stated. Say yes.
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 Anyone opposed? No. And the motion to approve item number nine as stated is passed. Item number 10, consideration and possible action on approval of certificate of substantial completion, commencement of a one-year warranty and acceptance of the infrastructure for the Clepper sidewalks project.
Mayor and Council, I'm sure you are all very familiar with where this project is along Clepper. So the project is complete. Punch list items have been addressed and we recommend approval of the certificate of substantial completion entering into the one-year warranty period and accepting the infrastructure.
The punch list is 100% complete?
There are a couple of items. There were some cracks noted in the sidewalks that we requested the contractor, that the contractor has sealed. We're going to continue to monitor those through the one-year warranty period. And anything outstanding at the end of that will be addressed at that time.
Any further discussion, questions? Entertained a motion for item 10?
Motion to approve the certificate of substantial completion to accept the Clepper Street Sidewalk Project and the commencement of the one-year warranty period to begin on November 23rd, 2022.
A motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion by Casey, second by Pat. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item 10 as stated. Say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Say no. And item number 10 is passed. Item 11, consideration and possible action on approval of certificate of substantial completion and acceptance of the results of the 2022 sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project.
Very similar to the previous item. This is acceptance of the certificate of substantial completion for the 2022 sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project. This is the project that led to the 2023 rehab project that was recently authorized and the downtown sanitary sewer rehab project that we're working through contracts on. Uh, everything has been complete for this project. And since there's no infrastructure to necessarily accept, what you're accepting are the results of the project, which are the inspection videos that we received.
Any questions? Entertained a motion to approve item number 11?
I'll make a motion to approve the certificate of substantial completion and accept the results of the 2022 sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project.
Motion by Pat. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Cheryl. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item number 11 as stated. All in favor of approving item number 11 as stated, say yes.
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 All in favor, say no. And the motion carries as stated. Item number 12, consideration and possible action regarding change order number two for the sanitary sewer and drainage improvements general land office grant project.
This project is also nearing completion. So this change order is actually a reduction in the contract amount by a negative $13,601. This is a final quantity adjustment to account for final quantities in the field, work that was not completed, or things of that nature. Really, it truly is just adjustment of quantities from the field.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the change order as presented.
A motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion by Casey, second by Pat. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item number 12 as stated, say yes.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. And the motion to approve item 12 is approved. Item 13, consideration and possible action regarding acceptance of sanitary sewer easement for lot six, block one of Longstar Estates.
Mayor and Council, speaking about this just a couple of months ago, we worked through all the details with the landlord. And again, as the letter states, the landlord is willing to grant us the easement for where the sewer line is located today. And just as a reminder, this sewer line was put in the ground probably 20 some odd years ago until someone was getting ready to build a house on the lot. It never surfaced or never came to the lot. There's one more lot that will do the same thing on. The difference there is we're going to abandon the existing easement where the line should have been. So there's no need to, I guess, to look at what would be a typical and then sort of amount of compensation for someone bringing in easement, which again is more than I have the cost of it. So if the landlord is willing for this homeowner has agreed to, the details are there in the letter. And he recommended that we approve this. We'll take that next step with the other adjacent homeowner.
Questions?
In the letter, number one says, "City agrees to waive water and sanitary sewer tap fees and inspection fees for the new home on the property."
Just the CSI, not the inspection fees for the home. It would be inspection fees for the cap itself. Is that your CSI inspection is what you're doing?
No, the CSI is required by the CDQ. That's completion construction. That's sort of the lead-based products of the home.
Your tap inspection, so if someone comes out, those are the, that's what we're doing here, not inspection fees for the home. The home and the building permit is totally separate now. This is the fees for, that basically when he comes in to apply for a utility account, his obligation is going to be that $125 deposit that every homeowner has to put down.
All right. So his initials are on this letter also. Is that correct?
Right.
And he didn't question that? Okay.
But he's paid in, so in his building permit that, so we have reviewed and approved his building permit based on the new location of his home is in conflict with this. The fee that he pays and the way that we do the residential inspection is the fees for the building permit, they're all going to the cost of that permit. There's not a permit fee and an inspection fee and foundation. Those are all rolled into the same, but the home.
I just want to make sure.
Yep. That's a good point. And I will absolutely clarify with him that he doesn't misconstrue this. But this is simply talking about taps.
I'm not agreeing to waive the inspection fees on the home when it's being built.
Yep. We are 100% clear on that and agree with you.
Thank you.
Good question. Any others? Entertained a motion to approve item 13?
Make a motion to accept the easement as presented.
I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 13 as stated. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item 13 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. And the motion to approve 13 is approved. Departmental reports, item 14, City Administrator's Report.
Mayor and Council, we have our report. We have to answer any questions. But I'll take the opportunity again, this is, should be, this is my last meeting in this chair to say how grateful and appreciative I am. This was a very challenging seven months. I'm confident that we're in a little bit better shape than when we found it. And just as a last time, there's no way that I could have done this without the staff that we have. They're outstanding at what they do. And we will always pick up and handle this stuff done. So thanks to them and thanks to you all.
Any questions? Item, if not, we'll move on to item 15, Utility Report.
I'll give this one as well. And so one note to follow up on is if I skip over anything that you have a question, I'll feel free to ask. But the one thing that I'll say, again, this is my last time. You spoke about it a week ago, a lot back, in the number that it kind of run up to about 5,000. So we just want to confirm that we fixed that process and as well as turned over two collections. So we started out with a letter just asking for voluntary payment. Hey, you left the city with a balance. Would you mind paying this, that, work in a good number of cases? There's some that we turned over to collections and some that just don't inherit, going after them because it would cost us more trying to go after them than we would to collect it. So that process is fixed. We see 63 permits put in line. We're at 1,056 utility accounts by our accounting and we can answer any other questions on utilities that we have as it gets down into water usage and stuff like that. All that's gotten on at this time of the year.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to item 16, Sales Tax Report.
Mr. Mayor is here. He is our sales tax reporter.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Director your guys' attention to the sales and use tax report for December. I'm looking past the cover page. You have 6,031 active taxpayers for your confidentiality report for the month of November. You have 2,355 taxpayers. That is a 6% increase over November of 2021, bringing your average to 2,242. Page after that, August of 2022 is still your highest taxpaying month of 2,385. And then this next list is the top 25 for the 12 months combined, with McCoy's and Kroger, Chick-fil-A always at top, and then Panda Express kind of climbing up a little bit. The page after that will be your November's 2022's top 25, which would be Kroger, McCoy's, and Entergy Texas this time, with Ruthie Grace at the bottom.
This was a quarterly filing month that we're looking at here. Is that why Kroger's there so much? They show up so much? They don't?
Yes. So November is one of your quarterly filing months. On the next page, it will show the comparison between November and October. And then so November is your quarterly filing month. October is one of the non-quarterly filing months. And yes, Kroger is going to be one as well, as also a quarterly emitter. And the page after that will be your December allocations comparisons. And starting with December 2022, you have 349,953.86, which is a 21% increase over last year's December, 2021, with 288,957.75. And so far, we've gotten you to 1,249,183.22. And so with your budget of 4.8, you're at 26%. And then so at the very bottom will be your calendar year allocations. Total for the calendar year, 4,792,612.52, bringing your average allocation to 399,000 over 339,000 in 2021. And so it looks pretty great. And the page after that will be your monthly allocations graphs and just a reflection of 339,000 for December. And it goes all the way back to January of 2016. And the page after that will be your previous year by month variance. And so that's just 21% increase. And this one always goes, also goes back to 2016 as well. And the page after that will be your yearly allocations as well as your yearly variance. And the page after that will be your mean and median trends and with your current business ending breakdowns of 269 total business entities. And right now, currently, I've just finished up a little bit of your site inspection. I need to come back to the city to try to catch a couple more sales tax IDs and talk to a couple business owners, as well as the salon, just so that I can submit them a better paperwork. They were kind of confused as to what I was trying to explain to them. So I'm going to come back later so we can get that for you. Is it development reimbursement, correct? Okay, sorry. So that's what I explained. They didn't seem to understand what I was about. So we'll just come back to it. And then so hopefully the next time I see you, I'll have the audit or the whatever I submitted to the controller as far as what needs to be corrected and if I found it. That's all I have for you today. If you have any questions, concerns, or anything you'd like to discuss or look forward, answer us.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I mentioned very quickly, I'll send you guys out. We've got the October confidential report.
Will they have a JLR report?
That all we know. You guys tomorrow. He said that we should get the December confidential here in the next week or two.
Yes.
So if you want to look out for those, I'll send them out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 17, Financial Report, Quarterly Investment Report.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go through the quarterly investment report first because it's a newer, it's a newer put-together report, a little bit shorter than the normal one we're not doing since we no longer have municipal accounts doing our quarterly investment or any of our investments now. We ended the contract back in October. I've gone ahead and put together a quarterly investment report that's made sure that it's in compliance and all with the Texas Government Code. Or I believe it's 22, chapter 22, 56 dot oh two three. And so what I've done is on that cover page is I've gone through for July 1st through September 30th and took all the funds and just showed kind of where we started, where we're ended for that quarter, the activity along with how much interest we've earned in each account during that quarter, as well as kept a tally of the yearly interest as well. So each quarter around March, June, September, and December, I'll be showing this report instead, which is, as I said, a little bit more condensed. And I went and did some research from other cities as well, too, just so I could kind of at least implement something that was presentable. So you'll see on that first page, all the starting activity, beginning, or the beginning values, ending values, and then interest. And then just a distribute, and then on the second page, a distribution of where your funds are at. As you can see, about two-thirds of your funds right now are in TexPole since they have roughly at right now, I think at 3.75 interest rate at this point.
We didn't have any Bitcoin, did we?
No. No Bitcoin, not that I'm aware of.
Good.
And then about a third of it in First Financial. I am, as we go, depending on the balances, just trying to make sure that there's a reasonable balance in your checking accounts. But if there's any excess, I am moving it over to your TexPole just because I know it's getting a higher interest rate. And then your other two pages are just your pledge securities, pretty much just to take what I did with the old reports that we were getting from them and just putting those together. And then on your monthly report for the month of October, you have a total of five months' reserve in your operating fund as of October 31st, 20 months' reserve in your MDC fund, and seven months in your utility fund. On your cash flow on the next couple pages, just a list of all your disbursements and checks, or receipts and checks that are on here. Some of them, we did deposit some funds from your checking account over into your TexPole. There was 400,000 of those deposited in both your utility fund and general fund from checking to TexPole, as well as I believe 250,000 from MDC and 100,000 from debt service, just as I said, to try to have as bulk of the money as we can invest it. But of course, if we need it at whatever point in time, I would be able to more than happily move back and over for anything that we need to pay for. And then for your budget for the month of October, just for the first month that has taken place, you've collected 6% of revenues and 7% worth of expenses. And then I do want to point out, since I'm more than likely, I more than likely will not be attending the January 24th meeting because of the birth of my son. I am planning to get the November report out by next week just so that way y'all have a copy of it. If you have any questions, as I said, while I'm, I'll be in and out during that timeframe. But I will still be available via email if force comes to us. So I mean, I'm not going anywhere and whatnot. But I will present your December and January information at your February 28th meeting.
Okay.
That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you much.
Thank Anthony. Item number 18, Police Report, Chief.
Mayor and Council, you have that report. There are a couple of things on there that I'd like to mention. We have the rest of those license plate readers that's been placed around the city. We've already got one wanted subject and one stolen trailer. I actually had another stolen trailer on Saturday. But that was coming into town after the parade. And the guy that owned the trailer seen it and says, I think that's mine. So he follows it. And the guy goes up in one of the wooded areas. The trailer gets bogged down. The truck gets bogged down. He jumps on a four-wheeler and he takes off. Well, the trailer was out of county. And that stolen chainsaws was a common case. So we recovered both those trailers from those deals. Also, with those, we had a rash of car burglaries in October. You see here, six. We've put two of those subjects in jail. We've got one that we're following a warrant for. And there's another one that we're following felony warrant for also, not just burglar motor vehicles, but also fraud. They've been doing this all over one government county and one county. So we've already put two of them in jail and we're following a warrant for the rest of them. So is there anything else you want to hear, you'd like to ask about?
No, just thank you so much for the Christmas parade and how it went as far as the safety end of the traffic and for the nice ride that you provided and all.
We had you guys banner. We just felt, picking up that Friday, they were closed Saturday.
That's okay. Thank you.
We'll do that again.
All right. Item number 19, Municipal Court Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Municipal Court Report for October 2022. The citations were 83 and the collections was $22,909.59. Were there any questions from Municipal Court?
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 20, Public Works Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Evening. You have the report in front of you. You'd be happy to answer any questions off of it that you might have. Easy enough.
How big was the fish that your son caught?
They caught one fish for 2.44 pounds.
How many?
Man.
How many pounds?
2.44.
Oh, I thought you said 24.
I told you not to come back with the...
It was good enough to move them up six points in the standing.
Oh, okay.
Six places.
That worked.
We were happy. Thank you for asking.
So Mike, on the snow, the snow machine stuff, do you know what the turnout was?
Phenomenal. I think I heard from Becky, according to Jock Form, we were at about 550-ish. I can't remember what the number was last year, but I know the flow never stopped.
That's...
I was thinking 300. I just, seeing how many people showed up, it seemed like three times the amount of people from last year. It was, it was a great turnout.
Especially with the threat of rain, too. Didn't keep them...
You got lucky. You got lucky.
Very good.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Item 21, Utility Operations Report.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Jacob Williams with H2O Innovation. On our first page, our district alerts, on October 17th, 2022, we had Loop Station 10 called out for high wet weather. Operator responded, bottom rival operator found wet weather levels normal. Operator reset alarms and then facility equipment. No further issues. Following page is your wastewater plant flow. The flow was 5.782 million gallons to the wastewater plant. Your three-month average flow was 192,367 gallons. Puts you at 48% of your permitted value. Your discharge limits were all within compliance, no excursions. Water report, the total water source is 17.598 million gallons. Flushing of 269,000. So total of 17.329 million. Sold 17.352 for accountability of 100%. Next page will be your groundwater production. Yearly numbers, which is just where we are from month to month. And your last page is the water accountability of the previous 12 months. These are always right, 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 about 5% or higher. Do a very good check of all the water. But other than that, that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you. Item 22, city engineers report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Starting on page 160 of your packets, you see our report. We'll hit the highlights. Our water plant number three, improvements project, contractor's still slowly materially addressing punch cycles. Facility's operational, it's been operational for a few months now, still going on. Your GLO projects, so the generator, we're still waiting on the generator itself. So you remember, the expected delivery time was end of this month. This contract was signed in May, so it was worded in May and taken down this long. So far, that's still the schedule that the contractor expects. As you can see in the photos, he's done the prep work, the conduit, the slabs, and any electrical he can do until he has the equipment in. Going on to page two of our report, the Martin Luther King project. Now, we had a payment this month, number four in the amount of 106173. You just approved change order number two. The contract is mostly completed, the project, the main item left is redoing the slope paving along Mcginnis. As you can see in that photo, it is holding water. And I think we talked about that at an previous meeting. They ripped up a part of it a few, probably a month ago now, and just hasn't, they have not gone back out to finish that work as of last week. Clean televising, we've talked about. Clepper sidewalks, we've talked about, so I'll skip over both of those. On to page three, we get to all the other kind of ongoing projects. The old Plannersville waterline and horseman projects. Both of those are wrapping up design. We'll get those submitted for approvals in early January. Biggest lead times areas, we have both text dot and the railroad to get approvals from. So we're working through those steps now. The McGowan downtown waterline replacement, McGowan Street, Caroline Street specifically. Those we are requesting, are working on additional survey to get those completed. We've done what we can until we get the surveys all back. Same with the downtown master drainage plan. The preliminary analysis of all the existing has been completed, but waiting on survey data to be able to complete the post-analysis. Your downtown sewer rehab project, remember, remember, this was awarded last month. We had a pre-construction meeting last week on December the 6th, and the contractor started submitting, to submit his construction submittals for that work. It's about a 90-day process and that time period started, I believe, today. Flyship Boulevard pavement repairs, we expect to have that done. That, I can't talk this evening, that design complete in January. Sanitary zero rehabilitation project in early February, and then the lift station 10 improvements, which is the Pulte funded project for the lift station on Horseman on Buffalo Springs and Lumbestore Parkway. That'll be expected to be completed design in March. Next section is listing all the plan and plat reviews, and there's a lot of them during this time period. Highlights, so, you know, most of them were comments have gone back. The two things that were approved on the plan review side were the clearing and rubbing for Pulte development, which if you've driven by, you've seen that they've started. We'll have photos for you at the next meeting. And as well as discount tire had a slight re-rising to their plans that we approved last week just changing their meter size, so nothing that was anything substantial. Plat reviews are listed. Only things to note, the mending plat for Buffalo Springs Shopping Center Phase Two, that is ready to approve, so it'll likely be signed this week or next to panel when they get all their hard copies submitted. That is next to Blue Wave Car Wash, where Dutch Bros and Popeyes are coming in. They were readjusting the property lines for those two developments. Montgomery Bin, Section 1 preliminary plat, that went to P&amp;Z on December the 6th for their approval, and they did. That's only for Section 1 of that development, which is 30 or 60 homes. 60 homes in the first section of that development at the 3rd. Ongoing construction, just the Montgomery Bin clearing, nothing else at this time. Tech Stop projects, we have a meeting with Tech Stop tomorrow to go over all the ongoing projects on this list. Specifically want to get there now that the electrical work is done. That was done last on the 6th. If you had your power shut off while they did that, they're, they told us it'll be complete within approximately 30 days once the work is done. So we'll be following up to them to see progress to that and give you an update, as well as all the other signal projects and access management and drainage improvements that are ongoing in Tech Stop's court. And then last item is the Lumbestore Bridge repair project. So we did receive plans and talked to the county earlier today. They're working through addressing comments to get that project out to bid to do the rip rap and channel improvements underneath, and it's about a total of, see, 152, 100 feet or so of channel that they'll improve as part of that project to protect the bridge structure itself. And then the very last page is updated vicinity map. I know we've talked about a lot of new developments, and all of them are on here, showing the Superior Properties project that we just talked about, the Lupe Tortilla location, and other projects that are going through the process of feasibility approvals, construction, et cetera, are listed. And that is all I have. Any questions?
Chris, I'd just like to reiterate, a few days ago, when I asked you to do whatever you could and also include pertinent personnel, just for example, in my neighborhood, we, we approve everything in my neighborhood. Come to find out, there's dark spots in our neighborhood. We go to check on it, you check on it for us. Those poles are supposed to be 300 feet, they're 475. Other things like concrete, all kinds of different problematic things, fences that are not quality. I'm tired of people walking away. But part of that's gotta be us measuring the poles or whatever it takes. I mean, it's, it's a whole team effort here, but involves building codes, involves the whole team here. But we need legal teeth. These people are walking away and we're fielding the complaints right and left. And, and we have a right to complain when our families can't even be safe. When it turns dark at 5 o'clock and you've got this ginormous part of Rock's Lane, and it's completely dark. And so put those steps into order, take your time on it, do it right, but bring it to us, to the council, so we can get some sort of legal recourse, because we're just letting them walk away and, and now it falls on the city.
Well, there. Yeah, we have worked on that outline and draft, and we're going back and forth to get something drafted up and have it to you in January so you can take a look at it.
Are we getting closer on the pavers? I know you had a phone call or something on the pavers.
That's one of the questions that I was gonna hit with him.
Yes.
Are we on those pavers? I'm gonna sneak in on that text I called him, but it's a call.
It is.
I promised I'd just hit him, I just run away. But just to hear where they are on those papers, because I know we're at the point now that they, I mean, that's the last bit they have, and then they're, it's not gonna help folks who have to get, you know, further east on 105, but they'll at least be out of the city and free of that intersection.
Sure.
For those two.
Sure.
So back to, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask a question on the previous topic of the items from builders or the things that are approved. When they turn in their approved plans, they're stamped, we have them. And when they walk away, we have a punch list.
Correct.
Right? So when they walk away and their plans don't match what they build, that's an issue.
Correct. So, you know, specific to this light issue here. So the contractor and the work that gets inspected is for the water sewer drainage payment. It does not include electrical, typically it's energy and/or bid-sout. The electric service provider installs those poles after the fact. So that's not within what is, their warranty is not regarding the poles. The warranty is regarding the infrastructure the city accepts. And so there isn't, that's what's in this ordinance is setting up that mechanism for the checking of it, the permit pulling of dry utilities that would include these new subdivisions that you pull permit, that would have a post-construction follow-up to it for, because what we consistently find, and, you know, Mike and I have talked about this as well, is the what utilities will go in, and then the dry utility contractors, the communication, the electrical, will go bore through all the sanitary sewer leads. And then Mike finds them when they put in the taps, the sewer caps come up for all the houses, and that's happening in town, we're crossing. So what we've talked about as part of the ordinance is if that type of work is done, that there's a follow-up television inspection, camera inspection of those sewer leads that they're crossing to confirm that those aren't hit and have issues that you won't find until you go and use it. And so that's part of what is in this ordinance, or the proposed ordinance is for the new sections and the existing right-of-way, existing treats, existing dry utilities that go in, that there is a permit that's pulled, there's a pre and post-inspection to make sure that what they're working on, they didn't damage. And we find out six months down the road, and now I'll have to spend the time chasing them.
One more thing, can you check with Commissioner Walker on helping us with lighting at the intersection of 105 and Lumbestore? Chief, the other day, I was about to pull out my normal way, and there must have been an accident over there because it was all backed up. Was that a kid involved? I mean, because that's where y'all usually, or somebody sets up and helps the kids when it's dark in the morning, negotiate that intersection, because a young driver especially, it's too dark. They come around that curve. So we really, I mean, was that what I was seeing? Traffic back?
There was an accident there, I'm not sure who was involved, so we checked.
Okay. But anyway, tell him it's a dangerous area.
Obviously, just the rear, west, Lumbestore Parkway.
The west side. Yeah, it's dark as it could be over there.
Yes, I have to call within the morning as well.
Alan, back on that ordinance, what is expected timeline before we have ordinance in place that we can vote on?
Well, I, I don't think we've, have you talked to Cable about that?
There's been emails back and forth over the past couple of months.
I don't think we're at the real drafting stage yet for the city code.
No, I'm, I understand that. How long?
Matter of weeks. I mean, once we get that information, we can put it in form for an ordinance, you know, within a few weeks, so.
I don't think it, correct me if I'm wrong, but at minimum have kind of the bullet point outline by the JRA tech meeting, and then kind of make sure we have everyone's buy-in and then finish up the bridge portion a few weeks after that.
So probably second week, it says second week in January.
February or January.
Well, we don't have that January 9th.
The outline's, actually, it's complete, so we can regroup on that. But if we have the outline of the 9th, at least for the council to review and see if there's anything you want to add, you know, between now and then, kind of get some of the, the teeth bullet points behind it, because most of the bullet points now are process and inspection related. And then depending on the outcome of the 9th meeting and y'all's feedback, then a few weeks into February until the full thing's drafted.
So first meeting in February.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to approve the departmental reports, items 14 through 22.
I'll make that motion a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve departmental reports 14 through 22. Motion is debatable, minimal, requires a majority vote. All in favor of approving departmental reports, items 14 through 22, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve the departmental reports. All right, executive session adjourned into closed session in compliance with 551.011 ETS EQ dot Texas Government Code to wit, Section 551.074 Personnel Matters, item one, appointment of the city administrator position. It is 7:25, and we will adjourn into executive session.